Joining us again, Mr. Vaselli seems to be on special assignment again. And Mr. Hedges is out, so I'm gonna do the best that I can kind of run this. We do have some new faces in the crowd, so if you do intend to speak tonight and would like to speak in public comment, I welcome you to sign up at this time. That being said, we are gonna table 6A. So when we get that far, I will ask for motion to table. The police pension board did not have an opportunity to meet yesterday to approve the compliance report, so we're gonna table it until such time as they need. So with that, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Fodor?
Hi there.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Coe?
Here.
Mr. Matt?
Here.
Ms. Palastrellini? Thompson? Mr. Robinson?
Here.
All right, and if you're able, please rise and reflect.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to follow it forward. We are indivisible and changeable.
All right. For you, you have the meeting minutes from February 6, 2025. Please review them at this time.
Mr. Lewis, you gotta make some change.
So Mr. Coe presented a couple of changes. Mr. Vaselli is present listed in the... And so I think you had listed Mr. Matt a couple of times.
No, Mr. Matt is no vote, and I'm the first executive.
Yeah, all right.
I'm also not, Ms. Anthony.
Okay, got it.
So we'll make sure she goes and reflects then. And are there any other changes to the minute that presented? I entertain a motion to approve the message that minutes has presented, or with the changes first that we mentioned.
No corrections?
You didn't have your coat off in your race.
I don't, but I...
Trying to get it before you get your coat off.
Page 6, 4B, partial reimbursement for the state of Sodra grant. I voted no.
All right. So we do have a first and a second. Do you guys wanna recall the motion and change it to reflect her changes? Or are we good that we're gonna make the changes?
Yeah, with changes suggested this evening.
Sure. Awesome, all right, so we have first and second.
I was...
Thank you.
Okay, we'll call roll, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Motion pass 6-0.
And with all the excitement, I skipped right over public comments. So good evening, Ms. Lines. Is there anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, Jim Mayer has signed up.
Welcome, good evening. Come up to the podium.
Guess I'm just here to kind of request approval or talks of maybe some off-road vehicle, utility vehicle, golf cart vehicles on city streets. I don't know if there's been, you know, I've talked to a couple of residents and a couple of the trustees about it, and have gotten some good input, have gotten some, you know, questions and, you know, how it's gonna be run, how it could be run. I don't really know all the legalities of it. I know that there's other neighboring communities that have approved that without too much problems. I wrote up a couple little sheet that what stuff could look like if you want to like to see that, to pass it out.
Absolutely.
You know, and this is just a, this is just a sample.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I should add.
And it's, no, but obviously this is just kind of preliminary and just to discuss it and get everyone's input and put it in everyone's head and see what, see what happens. So I guess that's, everything else, like I said, is kind of written out here. If there's any questions I could answer, happy to answer anything.
You said you've talked to other residents about this as well?
Yeah, I've talked to a few others, yeah.
Well, as the board remembers, we tabled this until the spring, you know, so we can have a discussion and talk with more residents. Your first resident that's come to the village board and speak to us in open session about it, so I appreciate that.
Sure.
And I appreciate your efforts as far as compiling some paperwork on it as well. I really appreciate that. So it is our intention to kind of discuss this through the colder months and then bring it back in the springtime, you know, for final discussion, so. And more resident involvement is always encouraged, so I really appreciate your time and efforts.
Oh, sure. Any other questions, like I said?
Now, you asked what part of the village you live in?
I live over on Johnson Street.
On Johnson Street?
Yeah, I'm a neighbor of Elbe, America, and right down the road from mine.
I appreciate you coming tonight and speaking to us.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, so the village managers' report. So I guess, I guess I'm gonna go through this and I'll lean on staff if necessary. So again, I will ask for a motion to table 6A due to the fact that the police pension board was not able to meet yesterday to approve the final report.
Motion to table?
Questions, comments? We'll call roll, please.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion pass 6-0.
I'm gonna lean on Mr. Khan for this. I'm thinking you're prepared to answer or present these next items.
So the first item, we have 6Bs, a resolution approving a final subdivision for Prairie Ridge Northwest Station. There is an agenda supplement in your packet from me describing what the process has been. Pivotal subdivision of Prairie Ridge North back in 2023. When they come in for development, they get the neighborhoods approved, neighborhood by neighborhood. In this case, this is a west station that's trying to be constructive to move sewer product to the mains so that this gets grants easily to the village for access to the west station in Prairie Ridge North.
Can you do me a favor and just go through J2, U, V, and Z? So that we can get all the, they're all kind of tied together so that we can have a discussion and then we'll call individual votes for each item.
So neighborhood J2 is on the west side of Harmony. It has, J2 has lots, six, not about, that's 63 lots that will be approved. Neighborhood U and B are on the east side of Harmony by neighborhoods TV and AA, which were approved previously by the board. Neighborhood U has 70 lots. Neighborhood B has 46 lots, for a total of 179 lots to be potentially approved tonight by the village board. And the last thing we have is neighborhood Z lot 219. This specifically with lot 219, a portion of it was in the wetlands. So this is a re-subdivision of that specific lot to move, create an outlot A and lot 219. Outlot A will be the portion that's in the wetlands, and the rest of it is out of the wetlands. And so it's a re-subdivision of that specific lot in neighborhood Z.
Mr. Khan, if I could ask on that particular one, since we had, are you approved, Z? Was there a house or anything that's been built on that lot yet?
I will turn it over to the developer. I don't believe there's been anything built on it yet, but I'll confirm with him.
Yeah, hi, Jason Higle with Crown Community Development. I do not, no, that lot has not been built on.
Okay.
And we're just kind of following county protocol and everything to get it out of the wetland, and it's just easier to do it with the rezoning. The setbacks of the building pad, nothing's changed, just the lot's gotten a little smaller, and the builder who's gonna buy that lot is aware of that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we, since we approved that earlier...
Yeah, it's not built on right now.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions for Crown or for Mr. Khan on any of the above items or aforementioned items?
On the lot 219, it doesn't go under, you said it's gonna be a little bit smaller. What is the new?
Should be in your packet.
As I was looking at the map, I see where that wetland is next to it. It's not going under any of the smaller ones that we had talked about before, which I think is what, 66 feet from it?
No, the front of that has not changed. This is in the rear, because the wetlands are in the back of the property, so it's literally in the rear. I have 43...
So it's cutting off some of the backyard?
Correct, yeah, backing up to the adjacent outlot.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I'm guessing probably at an angle.
Yeah, I have it right here, see it? It's that portion there, and that's in front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of small, so that's what we're talking about.
He's got a great... I don't want you to break what's up there.
You can...
It was perfectly arranged, I was able to pop it up and everything.
So it's still within C. We're not creating a new, because I thought I heard you say A, but A's in a different area.
It's by TZ and AA.
Oh, AA, yes, okay. I was like, A's on the exact opposite of the...
Yeah, A, double A.
Okay. And there's been no changes to anything based on what was already approved?
Correct, yeah.
With the exception of the...
Oh, the one house, 219, yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Khan or Crown Community Development?
I do. Can you please point it out on this map?
Sure.
Because I can't find it in the other pages, and I just want to see what...
Yes, so...
We found C, we found AA.
B is right here, I'm gonna be too... I have a bigger map, hold on, that's too small.
I was trying to match the shades, I was like...
There's a really good one, probably.
Maybe what it lasts is, it would have been... Even on my computer.
Sorry, it's been really hard to read, but I can see this is right, this lot, right? It's this lot right here.
Okay, good, all right, thank you.
Yes, that makes a lot of sense.
I do have one more question, sir. As, as we, as this side of Harmony is getting continued to develop now, we've got TA, AZ, we're adding U and V. You're now over 50% of the way towards Big Timber Road. Are you going to finish the road that connects to Big Timber to help divert some of the traffic? Both directions?
That is the plan. The last two units, I think, are W and...
W and X are the last...
So those would be the last two, yeah. That does require a permit with KDOT. We are preliminary working with them right now to get a permit that takes over about a year or so. But yes, that is the plan, and obviously it's based on demand, too. As the lots have been very successful out here, we anticipate another good year this year, so yes. It, I can't put a timeline on it, it won't be in '25, but I'm assuming in the near future afterwards, we will be making that connection.
So you're putting in now for that, since it takes a year for KDOT?
The plans, correct. We're gonna, our engineers design the plans and then we submit to KDOT, and it takes about a year to get a permit back from them.
That's what I mean, though, is that process starting soon?
Yes, it is starting this year, correct, yeah. We'd like to have that permit in hand so that when we're ready to go, we're ready to go. We don't want to wait for the last minute.
Yeah, the only reason why I ask is this is now 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of the 8, so it's over 50%. It's over 50% of the way. Yeah, all that traffic is gonna be funneled to Harmony where there's, right now, not a light or anything, and we have all the traffic. J adds to the left side.
Correct.
So now you've got all of this funneling to one choke point.
Correct.
And it just seems like we're gonna have potential traffic problems if we don't have an ulterior way out, like, that we know is in process before these start getting built out. That'd be my only concern.
Sure, understood, yeah.
We, do you know, is, is there going to be a stoplight at that intersection?
Which one?
The main artery on Harmony between the two subdivisions.
So, yes, we are under obligation with, and I don't want to get this wrong, because I'm actually filling in for my boss tonight. We are under obligation with KDOT to basically monitor this, to traffic help this with a traffic consultant, and then when we reach a certain threshold, that might warrant a traffic light. I don't know what that threshold is, but the county is aware of it to address your concern about, you know, all that being, all that traffic, all these homeowners living at that one point. Yes, that is a concern, and that KDOT has that same concern. So at some point, there will be a traffic light.
Yeah.
And it's a county road, so we play their game.
Well, no, that I understand. I'm just thinking through, you're right, housing is going really well in the subdivision.
Yes.
People are really liking the product that's going up there. When U and V get built out, if that road doesn't connect to Big Timber and J gets built out, most of the people that are buying this have families, right?
Yeah.
Now you've got everybody trying to get to Gary D. Wright Elementary or to the high school or to the middle school, all coming through this traffic. So now you're gonna have Allen Road with extended traffic, or I don't see people going up and down. So that's why I'm trying to figure out how quickly we get that Big Timber connection, because that's gonna alleviate a lot of that traffic during specific times of the day once these get built out.
And I will point out, whoever does buy, whichever builder does purchase W and X, they're gonna want that from a window standpoint for their models and for track, for sales traffic, right? That's a very big, important component of those units, so...
Understood, I'm actually saying before W and X even comes up for approval.
No, I understand, but it isn't our, it isn't, it is in the pipeline to get that done, so...
Were you referring to the traffic signal on Harmony Road?
On Harmony.
So I thought when we...
Right, that's Harmony.
Probably with... When Crown... When we, when we had gone through and approved all this, I thought approval was based on that, that was definitely gonna have a traffic light at Harmony and...
Prairie Ridge Boulevard. I think that's the clutch.
I thought that was, that was the done deal that a traffic light was going there.
The issue, just so that, that was what was discussed, but at the end of the day, it, it is, it is Crown's intention to make sure that that signal, if it's within the warrants of the county, we just can't put up a light. It's the same argument that we had with Lakewood. It has to meet their traffic warrants. It's a, it's a county road. So there's no doubt in my mind with the amount of homes on either side and all that kind of stuff that it's gonna not, that it won't not meet their warrant. But he's, respectfully, he's taking the safe answer because he's not Dan. And he's saying that he, and he likes to feed his family. And he's saying that it's their intention to put it there, but it has to meet the traffic warrants. It's respectful, respectfully, that's a safe answer, and he wasn't being a friend to start helping out.
I completely get that, but I know I and a few other trustees were very adamant that sure, no traffic signal, no subdivision.
Right, I, I agree. Okay, I agree, I mean, nobody's gonna dispute that.
Okay.
Except maybe the guy that wasn't in the room at the time. No, I understand, I understand.
I want that on record again.
Yeah.
I specifically said, I'm not voting for the...
And I have personally been at KDOT meetings, and this has been discussed, so it is in the works. It's just, I can't put a timeline on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
But thank you for that concern, I would like to bring that, but talk to our team about that.
If I could just jump into, just using the police report that our chief put in on page 100, list of the three-month traffic crash data, and there's none that have been up in that particular area, and only two I see near Allen Road and Harmony. So other than that, just wanted to note that we've got a good number of people there, and so far, there hasn't been, so. Thank you, Chief, for that.
Does anybody have any other questions about any of these? Now, I am going to take, I'm gonna entertain a motion for all of these individually. So we'll start with, I'll entertain a motion approving a resolution approving final plat of subdivision for Prairie Ridge North Lip Station. So first and second, any other questions, comments, or concerns on the lip station?
If I could just, where is that? Because the first one that I'm seeing is the neighborhood J2. So is, are we, Ms. Fodor?
It thought it was in there.
It's in here.
It's not in the same order then?
There.
Page 29, should be wrong.
29? Oh, that's right, that's why I was, I was in the reverse, I apologize.
Okay.
I was looking at the maps. So I was...
It's right after the very first color map. It's right there, you just...
You passed it?
No, no.
Okay.
Starts with a resolution that was on page 31.
This, and then here, that says site reservation, I don't know, here, points to the top.
Okay, it starts at that. Okay, so the resolution then starts on page 3. I'm back, thank you.
All right. Um, let's see. All right, so you have first and second, no other questions, comments, please, call roll, please.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Motion pass 6-0.
Okay, next, I will entertain a motion approving final plat of subdivision for Prairie Ridge North, J2.
That was moved. Taking it in.
Have a first and second, question, comments? Mr. Khan can call roll, please.
Ms. Palastrellini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Motion pass 6-0.
Next, I will entertain a motion approving final plat of subdivision for Prairie Ridge, neighborhood U.
Go on, move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Ms. Khan can call roll, please.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini?
Aye.
Motion pass 6-0.
Next, I will entertain a motion approving final plat of subdivision for Prairie Ridge North, neighborhood V.
Second.
First and a second, questions, comments? Ms. Khan can call roll, please.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion pass 6-0.
And finally, I will entertain a motion approving a final plat of subdivision for Prairie Ridge North, neighborhood Z, lot number 219.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Khan, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
And Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Motion pass 6-0.
Thank you, thank you very much, everyone. Thanks for carrying this along, Mr. Khan, and thank you for coming tonight. Yes, thank you. You don't need to stick around for the rest of it if you don't, if you don't... It's a hockey game, I gotta go. All right. Next, so we have staff reports, we have the streets report and the police report. Please review them at this time. I believe it starts from page 100, for those keeping score, thanks to Ms. Palastrellini.
What is the destruction of the property?
From Van's property, you know, Van... Or, I mean, it could be other things, too, but that's pretty much what... It's not warm enough for the destruction to be happening at the park, otherwise you'd know about it.
Yeah, we'd have our own spreadsheet.
Any questions on the police report or the streets report?
Where's the auto theft done?
Well, it's been pretty cold. A lot of that kind of stuff goes down in the cold weather. They're not outside trying to break into cars. But when it warms up, it's gonna come back.
We did, we have it forward now with a digital ticket name.
Oh, man, now that everything's out of warranty.
We're actually issuing them. Not everyone yet, we're kind of working through, just, just breaking, breaking that in and making sure that everything's working properly. There's still a couple things that need to be done, it needs to be, still needs to be tied into our, our records management system, so the data is automatically imported, but other than that, everything seems to be working pretty well. And then Lieutenant Neblock is working on accreditation, and we're, we're moving forwards of that pretty quickly. So I think, I think sometime late this spring, we'll be able to have an onsite inspection or results of the road, move forward on, I leave accreditation.
Can I add to the police report, Chief? Sure. So I had a meeting yesterday with District 300 at Central Office with the, with the mayors and managers and police departments and chiefs and that kind of stuff, this is all their leadership council. And I was one of three mayors that attended, John Skilman from Curbersville and Debbie Sosin of Valguacuen also were there. We went around the room after talking about their master facility plan that they've invited the community to participate in. They kind of gave their final wrap-up and all that good stuff. They went around the room and they asked about positives or concerns that we as municipalities have with the school districts. And Mayor Sosin of Valguacuen highlighted the issues that they've been having at Jacob High School with their co-bret and the false alarms due to alarm malfunction and stuff. And there were some fireworks between Mayor Sosin and certain board members there. It was, it was a pretty good scene, but I didn't really appreciate how some of the board members were sparring with another mayor, so I brought up the fact, because they were, the school district was... I think the superintendent did a great job speaking about that issue and addressing it, but the school board was pretty much, the school board member was pretty much chastising the other mayor for having conversation and asked her to have some grace. So because it was a technology issue, so I took the opportunity to ask the school district to look into the false alarm calls in general, because out here, it is a very human issue that's been going on for a very, very long time, so much so that we passed an ordinance at a certain point to try to get the behavior of the school district to change, and it has not. All they do is they keep paying. So the, the school board members and the superintendent seem very interested in learning more about our issues, so hopefully they take, they take some action. I also took the opportunity to tell the entire room how grateful we are that the school district has chosen to partner with us on your program that escapes the name. What was the name?
Juvenile Justice Online, it's an adjudication, I mean, it's a diversion program.
Diversion program. And so they, of course, came up to me afterwards and said that they will be in touch, so...
They were supposed to have a meeting the first week of February to determine if they wanted, if the school district wanted to move forward with that.
Well, it sounds like they're gonna now, because somebody talked about it in a meeting full of people.
That's good, because I have not heard anything back from, after the first week.
Just let me know if you have any moving on, is all. But I thought that, since this board's brought up the false alarm calls more than once, I felt, I felt that I would share with you guys. Okay, any other questions on the staff reports? Thank you. Next, we have, we have a regular accounts payable. Oh, can I make a, I will entertain a motion to table the accounts payable personnel indefinitely.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Khan can call a roll, please.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly?
All right.
Motion pass 6-0.
All right, now we have the regular accounts payable and the amount of $562,736.29 to be paid on our report February 26, 2025. If you have any questions?
On page 3, Ms. Lines, the meters MX used for 10,900, is that for new development? Are we being reimbursed for that, then?
That is for new development, and we charge $450 on each new home permit for that purpose.
Questions?
I have a question on page 2, the brand of communications, April Morning Fairing. Can you tell us where that is located?
That's the cimeron that's in Tam's Farm. Okay. And I'm trying to... Oh, no.
That was a repair.
This is actually a repair to the one on Har- uh, Hampshire Drive.
Okay.
Sorry.
That was the day they kept going off all over town?
Yeah, right.
It was the day, couple of days. It was like a Tuesday or.
It was not a Tuesday though.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty good.
On page five, we have a safe opening.
Yeah, we tried to crack the safe.
Yes.
We tried to crack.
Bank that was in and, um, for seven hundred and thirty nine dollars it was a safe.
We tried to crack the safe in the back.
Oh, that one?
Didn't get anywhere. We got a camera inside of it, but that's as far as it got.
What'd we think?
Uh, piece of paper.
And two micro clips.
So it was like, it was like Geraldo, because there was all these rumors of being a gun inside of there and. So we blow it up somewhere? And, uh, no, you can't, if you can take it out of here, you can blow it up, but you're not gonna be able to get it out.
I have video if anybody gets it. What was the safe for before?
So we have, we have, we have a huge safe in the back.
Oh, I know it's there.
But there's, but there's a small safe on the bottom of it that we were trying to get into.
Okay.
There was all these rumors. And we thought we tried. And we, we were hoping that there would be something in there that couldn't live without, and guess what, it's guns.
What was it before that there was a safe or was it the village's safe or was it police or?
That big safe back there? I, I don't know.
It was donated to the village because the company needed a safe. So, but it wasn't for village business or?
No.
Uh, I mean, we've always used it to store important records since it's been in the villagers. At least my knowledge.
But it's bigger probably than your car, Jimmy.
Oh, I've seen it and tested. I've just never.
It is genuine.
Yeah.
We've got, we used to have a lot of, all the ordinances and stuff were locked up in there all the time.
Uh, page eleven.
Page eleven.
One hundred and eleven and almost hundred and twelve thousand to land for architectural services. Uh, we haven't gotten any updates on the project. I don't know that we've been talked to about where that's at. What's the one hundred and eleven, one hundred and twelve thousand?
This was the last piece of the architectural, um, services that, that were approved, um.
Right, but have we seen any output from this?
Um, so, uh, I'm, I honestly can't remember what has been shared with you. We have, um, renderings, drawings, we have selected, um, colors and flooring and all sorts of good stuff at this point, so.
Yeah, can we add to the next agenda and update on this?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, but, um, yeah, so staff's been intimately involved with it.
I, I understand. It's just a hundred and twelve thousand dollar check.
That we approved.
We approved the whole contract, but usually we get updates through a status project.
Did we approve like two hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Brand month, month ago.
Yeah. So, so to your question, we can have an update on the folks building.
Right, we approved that project, but this means they completed half of that entire contract in a month. The engineering portion, that's, that's a lot of hours in thirty days.
Well.
That's why I'm curious on this.
Your ask can be, uh, we, we can have an update on the next agenda.
Has it gone out for bid yet?
Um, I believe so, yes, it has.
So is the contractor gonna award it?
Not yet. Not yet, but the bids are coming back and I understand they're pretty favorable. As of Wednesday.
Page thirteen.
Thirteen.
Um, Uniwab, website conversion.
Yeah, that, that is, if you remember, as part of last year's budget process, we had talked about the website being out of date and needing to be updated. Um, we did meet, staff did meet with a bunch of different vendors. They chose to go to stay with the same vendors. I think that we voted on it. I can't remember. It was a long time ago.
Yeah.
But, uh, Mo Cons has worked and transitioned the website to what you see today.
Okay.
If you go to our website, to the average eye, it's not any different. Um, well, I shouldn't say it's not any different. It's, it's different in a lot of ways, but not enough that people realize that it's changed. But on the backside of things, it's much more, uh, convenient to manage and it's not out of date and insecurity and stuff.
Okay.
So Mo put a lot of time and effort into the conversion and moving stuff from one site to another, but that's all happened in the last, it went live on the thirty first of January.
Okay, because I'm not techie.
Sure.
It's a, a conversion of it. I mean, it's, it's a significant amount of money and you just told me that Mo did a lot of it or Mr. Khan did a lot of it.
Well, there's, there's certain, there's certain amount of stuff that happens on the backside and there were certain amount of staff time that had to do for migration.
Okay.
That's just the, the way that it goes. You can't have, you, you can't, if you were to hire a company and move everything, to move everything over.
Okay.
Links would be broken and things wouldn't be in the right spot. So staff, staff that understands the language and that kind of stuff and what documents mean and that kind of stuff, there was a certain amount of time that he had to put into it.
Okay.
So.
And I think it's fair to say that we're still discovering things that are not working exactly right. So if you notice anything, um, let Mo know for sure. And one of the other things that I think is very important is this now meets the accessibility requirements. Um, so, yeah.
Yeah, there was the other thing, there was the screen reading technology wasn't there, there's templates on our website, so if anybody was vision impaired. And then we really struggled with mobile devices. Um, it was mobile device friendly to a certain extent, but the new website's way more mobile friendly. And that's where a lot of our views come from, people who's reading it on their phones and.
Okay, you can definitely see the differences I follow.
Right, but to the average untrained eye, if you were to go there, to your point, it's a lot of money and if you vote the website, you're gonna go, it's the same as it was. That's kind of what we were going for.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
Because last time we changed from one template to another, there was, there was like an outcry from the community if you remember, they couldn't find anything. All right, any other questions on accounts payable?
Uh, just one more, sorry.
Sure.
Uh, page sixteen, that reimbursement for this facade program, the fifteen thousand fifty seven seventy five is for the project, the application by David Callahan, correct, the one we discussed, but it says Getzelman Enterprises?
Yes, so, um,
He's married to Sue Getzelman.
We received a W nine for this project and, um, it came back under Getzelman Enterprises, um, doing business as Style and State. So, um,
Okay.
It, it is the same entity or it's the right entity that's getting the money.
Okay, I was just.
Yeah.
It's just didn't match any of the other things that we have the application for or anything else.
Yeah. The formal entity of this line says Getzelman Enterprises.
Okay, Mr. Khan, then can you make sure that the paperwork for the facade program or somewhere notes that this was actually paid under this other business name? Just in case the board that doesn't know the background sees something.
Okay. No more questions? Any more questions? Can we go to the next? I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable.
Summon.
A first and a second. Lionel and, uh, and Mr. Kelly. Or Mr. Matt and Mr. Kelly. Um, I have first and second, do you call the roll please?
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Spoder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.
Uh, Business Development Commission.
Uh, the BBC did not meet this month. There was not enough people for a physical quorum, so the next meeting will be in March.
Um, new business, do you want to talk about Finance Committee?
Sure. Um, Finance Committee, uh, so my two Finance Committee members, I had sent an email asking what dates next week work, please cancel that because we won't be meeting next week. The original budget was, um, figured to be delivered on the eighteenth. Um, but due to some delays, it's gonna be delivered to the board, the first draft next Friday. So it'll be the week after. I'll send an email to both of you about that, but it'll be the first week of March that we're looking to do that. This is gonna require, as I shared with Ms. Lyons and Mr. Hedges' staff, to do very fast turnarounds. Cause we did a workback plan that matched last year's schedule. Because there are statutory dates of when we have to do a public hearing and Miss Lyons has to post things in papers and there's lots of stuff that has to meet by certain dates, so we tried to do a workback. It, uh, we are, it was gonna be already canceled. Last year we tried to do three meetings. This year it's just gonna be two meetings. Um, again, when we have these meetings, I, I will be checking with the Budget Committee on what days work best for them. When those dates are set, I will make sure that the entire board is aware. The board is invited as a committee or the whole to participate in that. And we'll go through the process. An updated schedule or calendar of events will be forthcoming soon this week.
Uh, did you receive my email from this afternoon?
Yeah, but it didn't have the, the new.
Do you want, I, I can complete those.
Okay, great. And then I'll share it up, just so we have the expectation of by which day, and I think it's the March, March twentieth date is the board meeting in which it will be fully discussed.
Right, it will be the preliminary budget will be presented at the first.
It's not for approval, but it's for full board discussion in a, in a, a board meeting. So that's one of those dates we're working back from, so. Any questions?
I don't have any, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? New business, other announcements?
I just have one question. Is Paulson up, Tim?
Yes, Mr. Paulson.
Yes. Uh, have you heard, uh, the condition of the well pump that was pulled?
I have not. They, they have it at their lab. They're looking at it. I don't have an update. They did report that, you know, the, uh, the casing pipe is in bad shape, but, um, I don't have a report back on the, on the pump.
Okay. Mr. Coe, how long does it take to open the machine?
You and I could take it apart and a half a day. I'm just, I'm just curious.
Been a couple of weeks, that's why.
It's been longer than that.
Mr. Paulson, can you follow up and then get with, uh, Mr. Hedges so that he can get an email out to the board with the condition of the pump?
Yes, I will do that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Um, I just have one last thing. Uh, the announcement went out. I sent everybody an email today. The announcement on WGN Radio was today that they're featuring us next week. Um, we've got interviews lined up, uh, with several in the community from the many different taxing bodies that are gonna be on the radio station. Uh, I kick the day off at eight forty eight next Thursday, so if you've got something better to do, I would, I would encourage you not to listen to WGN Radio, but at the same time, um, I will also be sending a list out when we have confirmed times of when people are gonna be, so you know when to tune in. Um, the video should, that they did and they shot around town, they walked up and down State Street and went into a couple of different businesses and there'd be, uh, Jeannie from the Chamber, um, um, that should be posted in the next week or so. So that's gonna be, I think the videos are about five or six minutes about interviewing different businesses in town and stuff. So it's just a, a unique opportunity to showcase some of the good stuff that we've done here as a, as a group, right? So, um, as a community, so it was a unique opportunity, so please promote it and, uh, have some fun with it. I mean, you guys should, we should all be proud of the work that we've all accomplished over the last few years. And, um, it's been good, so just wanna put that out there.
Thanks, Paul. Question?
Sure.
When you wrote that you were disappointed about the pronunciation, was it one of the reporters?
Um, so it was Bob Serat on, on the news this morning, on, on the radio this morning. And, uh, I have the reporting, I sent the recording out to you guys. I was very upset about it because I was like, I put it, I like, when we talked about it here at this table and when we talked about it like on the telephone and, and, uh, I even did it phonetically best I could, Hampshire, you know, and I was like, and I was like, please don't because it's not gonna play well in town. And then the first thing to do, then I'm like, son of a. So, anyway. Nails on chalkboard.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just thought it was yes. Wanted to make sure it wasn't our votes president or?
Definitely wasn't me saying it wrong.
Just checking. All right.
Right. Anything else for the good of the class tonight?
Hi.
Yeah, uh, something I thought I'd just bring up, um, in relationship to, to, to water usage is, uh, something we in Hampshire, uh, look at seriously because of the cost and whatever, but my granddaughter lives in Crystal Lake and she received a letter from Crystal Lake, uh, advising her that she was, they'd noticed a, a serious increase in the water she was using. And, uh, if she wanted, they would send somebody out to her house to have a look at it, which they did. They sent somebody out to the house and at no charge to, to them. And I thought it was nice that somebody had somewhere in their system, they were able to monitor that somebody like that was using excess water and they were, they were gonna do something about it. So they came to her house and they discovered that the toilet systems were running when they shouldn't be and, uh, we fixed all that up and, um, he showed how to check the meter, uh, the spinning little gadget in the water meter should not be moving when you're not using water. And so we got it to that point where it was okay, but I thought it was very interesting that they had something in their system where they actually with no provocation from anybody or calling from anybody had taken the time, had somebody in place to observe that excess water was being used and, and brought it to the attention of the homeowner. So this is, you know, I don't think we have anything in our organization that does any of that, but it's interesting that they have that.
But our water department will send somebody out to inspect if you have an issue with your water.
With your meter, yeah.
With your meter.
I don't think we go as far, we offer suggestions as far as like check your toilets and stuff like that, but we're not. We're not, we don't have the ability or manpower to go in and check people's houses and check their toilets to make sure they're not running and that kind of stuff.
So to the extent that we can, um, we read meters only every other month. But if, uh, if a giant reading is found, we do call the residents and say, you know, warn them that it looks like you're gonna get a giant bill because we believe that there's a leak or, you know, some other, other reason, so, um, Mary does actually make a lot of calls to people about that exact situation. And we don't do that, we don't do the USPS because we're struggling with that right now.
I thought it was interesting that they had some way of somebody in their organization would, would look at that and maybe it's interesting from our point to find out how, how they're doing that.
Sure.
It would be advantageous.
So we have, we have investigated that exactly.
Fraud that they contact you. Yeah. Some, same thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Miss Lyons.
So we have, we have investigated that, we, um, the village is not on the same technology, so we can't do that for every home in the village. However, we do have, um, some MXUs, which are the radio read devices that, um, are capable of sending out regular readings to us. So we don't have the antenna that's necessary for that and we are currently investigating, you know, like the cost of that and implementing, implementing that. And then as meters and MXUs are changed over, um, you know, we, we do do a few changeouts every single year, so eventually everybody will be on the same technology, hopefully towards now to the next technology, but, um, we are investigating that.
Yeah, um, in conversations we had, I've had with Mr. Hedges, there are some communities like Pingree Grove that have invested in radio technology. Then rather than sending people around to read meters, meters report on their own, and then they only send people out to read meters if they're not reporting. And so that's an initiative that we've kind of like started to look into. Because that would, that would free up staff from having to just drive around and read meters, because the process now, correct me if I'm wrong, is they have to drive the street in a village, uh, drive every street in a village with a machine to, to read the meter, correct?
Um, not every single street, but yes, in the, you just have to get into a neighborhood and then you pick up what you can and it tells us where they need to drive.
So there's better ways to do it that's a little bit more efficient and so it's gonna require some[1735.65]